Morning, everyone. We ask you to please rise for opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance if you're able and before we begin the official Their heavenly Father, we have a great deal to remember and honor this week. On Sunday, we'll celebrate the United States Marine Corps on their two hundred and forty ninth birthday. Marine Corps has served in nearly every conflict in United States history. For the brave men and women in Marines, we say hurrah and thank them for their service. Lord, on Monday, we'll honor our veterans. You've created these men and women to be the best of society. They're called to serve and protect our great land. We ask for your protection and safety for the men and women that give unselfish service to protect our freedoms. We thank you for those veterans that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. May their memory always be preserved for the love and dedication for our freedom. We would not have our freedoms without these outstanding men and women who stand tall for all of us. Continue to protect all our servicemen and women as they protect our freedoms. And Lord, this week, a few of our local fire departments are having their annual banquets. We thank you for their dedication. These men and women that leave their families at night, weekends and holidays to help their fellow residents. They do have a sense of service and love for their community, for the best of the best of the communities. They drop everything without receiving any compensation because they labor out of love. We ask you to bless them for their service. We pray that we all unite now as a country, work together for the common good. Let us always honor our veterans each day by guarding and protecting the freedoms they have sacrificed for for us on our behalf. And we ask you, guys, in our meeting this morning, these things we humbly pray this day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regard with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Morning. At this time, we'll convene our commissioners' public meetings and ask for approval of the minutes of previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
On your side? Do any public comments on agenda items, agenda items only at this time? From the audience in the online?
Check.
Okay, thank you. Forrest, diggy. Morning.
Good morning. The first one I have vote to approve the accounts payable cash requirement report for invoices due through November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, to be paid on November sixth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of six hundred seventy one thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and fifty seven cents.
Do you want to do a breakdown for us, please?
Sure. Out of the general fund, that's four hundred and thirty two thousand, nine hundred and seventy six dollars. That's sixty four percent. Out of other grants, fifty three thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars, almost eight percent. RMS is one hundred eighty four thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars, twenty one cents. That's twenty seven percent and nine hundred and forty three dollars out of escrow.
Okay, thank you. Motion accept the council requirements.
I will make the motion.
A second. Are any questions or comments on? All fair side?
Then I have a vote to ratify jury panel payments in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and five dollars due on November fifth, twenty twenty four. This was due to an equipment error. Typically, we pay them with debit cards, but we had a malfunction with the equipment, so we had to pay them by check.
Okay. Motion?
I'll make the motion. A second.
We want to thank people for doing their civic duty by serving others' ears. We know that sometimes it can mean inconvenience. Who's working? Miss working. We just want to thank for their service also. On your side?
Then lastly, I have a vote to approve the credit card cash requirement report of purchases from September twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, through October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and sixty three dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay, motion.
So I'll make that motion.
A second. Any questions on credit card purchases? All fair side? Sorry. Thank you. Very informational items. Forrest, thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
This is an announcement that the county will be going out to bid on a contract to do American for Disability Act renovations at another group of thirty polling places. We awarded a contract for the first group back in, I think it was April or May, and the construction on those those facilities, which was also about thirty thirty facilities. It's been going very well. It is starting to wind down. We still have a few adjustments. We've been making it some sites that we have one actually today, a change, and then I think there will be another one either next week or more likely the week after. But we're starting to wind down on that, and we now have this next group of thirty facilities where we have plans for the work that needs to be done, the improvements that need to be made, and we're ready to we had so much fun the first time. We're ready to do it all over again.
Forrest, you know amount so far that's been allocated to updating the polling sites?
Yes. So to date, I think the total we've invested when you put together the the design costs for the for the plans and the surveys we had to do, we had to assess every one of these sites to get a sense of what was working, what wasn't working, what needs to be changed. And then the construction on this first contract, it's been, we're up to a few hundred thousand dollars. It's anticipated the second contract is likely to be in that ballpark. That's actually better than what some of my initial estimates were. Thankfully, the requirements that Department of Justice places on on accessibility at a polling place facility, it doesn't touch the entire facility. It's not, you know, every place where people could go. Their concern and what we have to to correct out of these places is what are the parts that a voter touches? So they're looking at parking outside, path of travel to the entrance, entrance itself, you know, and how do you get to the voting area? So we don't have to look at everything in the building, just the narrow, those narrow criteria.
So this is critical because gives everyone the opportunity to vote.
That's right. The county entered into a settlement agreement with with the Department of Justice early last year in twenty twenty three, and we are, I want to say about the eleventh or twelfth county in this state, the Department of Justice approached and said, we're going to look at your sites and we're we're going to let you know what what we find that we want you to fix. And, you know, that work is that they're doing could continue into the future. So for our part, we we have to make these improvements so that we're complying with the settlement agreement.
Right. And we want to make sure that everybody has access to the vote.
Absolutely.
However, we also want to note on the backside of this that the federal government is not refunding us for this.
No.
So this comes out of our general fund.
Yes.
So so taxpayers are paying for this, and it'd be nice if the federal government was mandating it, support the cost, but they're not. Yeah, we understand that it needs to be done because it's critical that everybody has the opportunity to vote.
It is absolutely. It's one of those unfunded mandates. You know, if there's a silver lining I can offer, it is that the sites we're talking about that we use as polling places, they're, you know, they're the building blocks of democracy on election day, but every other day of the year, they're they're important buildings in their community, fire halls, municipal buildings, churches, civic buildings. So the improvements we're making, we have to do them because of elections, but the facilities will also benefit from those improvements all year long, the people that use it. So we've made a lot of, as a county, we've made a lot of investments, you know, in, you know, area institutions, and this would be, you know, fall into that wheelhouse.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Forrest, just want to go back up the podium for a second. We want to thank you and your staff downstairs and all the county workers that that worked during the election day.
Yeah.
It's amazing. We have the phenomenal staff. They do a great job.
Yeah.
I think everything was done by ten o'clock.
Yeah.
But I mean, I see this morning Nevada, Arizona is still counting.
Yeah.
And and here we are, you know, we have ours done, and you've done a great job. We just want to commend you and your staffs and the county workers that assisted.
I have a great staff. I'm really proud of them, and you should be proud of all the county employees we have from different departments who they come together to make it work every time. Government works best for the public when there is a shared sense of purpose, you know, and understanding that we're all in this together, and thankfully, we have that in spades here in Lecombe County Government, and on election night that shows. And and our poll workers did a fantastic job out there, too. You know, they work a long day. They live in those townships. They live in the boroughs, the city. They care about their communities, and they're some of the best of us to go out there and do that work. And really, thanks thanks to them, everything went very smoothly out there at the polls.
I want to thank poll workers, too. I had a conversation with my daughter voted for the first time at a poll. She voted absentee ballot last time because she was at school.
Yeah.
But she first time she voted at a poll, and she knows the poll workers, and so it's, we're in the car coming back home. She asked me about them. You know, and I said, well, they get paid next to nothing for a very long day. And she just was amazed how their dedication, that they'd be willing to do that for the stipend that they get paid.
Yeah.
And I said, that's public service. That's what they do. And she thought that was really neat. That we have people in the community who are willing to step up and be a poll worker like that.
And in a presidential election in particular, it can get pretty exciting out there. I mean, we every election is going to have some bumps no matter what. When you have fifty thousand people and five hundred poll workers out at eighty different voting sites, you know, that's that's just a lot of moving parts, and it's, that's just the normal messiness of self-government, but it doesn't make it any less majestic when it's happened. You know, I've been doing this ten years, which I round up to a million if it feels that way. But I've witnessed now twenty elections from the inside, and it's still amazing to watch when I have a moment to kind of take it in.
I would say this, this is our second, you know, because we'd been here for the primary, but it certainly wasn't what the presidential election was. But from the the operations inside, there's still eighty one precincts open. Still, it's just how many votes were cast. And, you know, we hear about the inefficiency of government a lot, and we, you know, we're learning that, trying to make it more efficient. We hear about the slowness of government, of getting things done. And to see the election process with the ballots come in, and it is like clockwork. They have such a good team. They have people who've done it over and over, and it is the smoothest process you could imagine for something that you would think could look like a cluster, and it is not. You know, as Forrest said, not just Forrest and his team, but the volunteers that throughout the county that come to help. And, you know, just being able to stand here and watch, and we don't do anything but say thank you and watch. That's what our job is on election night. But it is incredibly efficient, and we are lucky to have the group that we have here. I will, after two elections, I can say that with a hundred percent honesty.
It's gratifying to watch every time, you know, regardless of the outcome. I mean, I know we we always take some calls after the election because people are, you know, they may be upset about the outcome, and they'll call, they'll call us because of, you know, concerns they had or whatever. And I know I know people are experiencing very strong emotions after a presidential election. I mean, half the country is forecast, probably despondent, and all those feelings are okay. I mean, I saw that those feelings on display after twenty sixteen and twenty twenty, because those were my first two presidential elections in this job. But eventually, my hope is that as a country, we're going to start to find a way to bond from this stuff, because it's not healthy to keep spending four years at a time stewing over the outcome of the last presidential election. You know, we letting them cast a four-year shadow over everything we're doing, because that's what it's been like in election administration. You're kind of living with the consequences of the last presidential election for the next four years in the litigation, the debates about how elections are run, what do we need to change, what should we leave? The same, people did that after sixteen and twenty twenty and couldn't let it go. We need to remember that self-government, it's not a one-time event. No, it's not, or it's not even a presidential election once every four years. It's next year is an election year. Every year is an election year. There's going to be a lot more opportunities for people to make choices about what direction you want to go as a community, a county, a country, and and that's why I keep doing this job. There are some days when, yeah, I've had it up to here. You know, sometime, maybe it's the public driving me crazy, or it's the the media driving me crazy. Sometimes it's the Board of Elections driving me crazy.
What?
Yeah.
Sound like everybody takes turns.
About the media.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, there's a couple of days like that, but overall, I do, I love what I do. I care about making self-government continue to work, and I appreciate from you the resources and manpower that you're able to give us to make sure that that it works every time.
I should have even mentioned, too, that the group, not just the finely tuned machine, but they they did it with a smile on their face. It's not a tension. It's not a miserable place, like I just want to get out of here. Like, the atmosphere is upbeat. Everyone's working together, and it it really is a sight to see.
Yeah. So I I have to come up here again in a minute, so we're not going to have anything left to talk about, but I'll have the change order for the contract.
Okay, thank you, Forrest.
Okay, thanks.
Personnel actions. Mike?
All right, good morning.
Morning.
Approved following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions outlined here in attachment A. At the pre-release center, Mary Stein, resident supervisor, union position, eighteen sixty four per hour, eighty hours per pay period, anticipated start date November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Public defender's office, Rachel Gethin, public defender investigator. This is a grant position at twenty five dollars per hour, seventy five hours per pay period, anticipated start date December second, twenty twenty four. And then public safety, Patrick Kusick, emergency management specialist, pay grade eight, forty six thousand, three hundred and ninety three dollars point sixty two cents per year, seventy five hours per pay period, anticipated start date November eighteenth, twenty twenty four.
Motion accept personnel actions.
I will make a motion.
A second. Questions here in the comments. On your side?
Hi.
Thank you.
Mike. Oh, recess commissioners' public meetings this time for the Board of Assessments, Revisions, and for being Board of Assessments, Revisions. This time, good morning, Brooke.
Morning, commissioners. Seeking your approval for a real estate refund for meager investments LLC in the amount of seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifty five cents. This was due as a result of a real estate appeal from last year that was filed in the courts, and we have now settled with them.
I have motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side?
The next item is vote to approve to certify the tax rules for twenty twenty five. There are fifty two thousand taxable parcels. The taxable assessment is five billion, seven hundred and eighty five million, nine hundred and thirty four thousand, four twenty four. There are two thousand, one hundred and thirty one exempt parcels. The exempt assessment is one million, sixty four million, I'm sorry, one billion, sixty four million, one hundred and thirty four thousand, four forty. Total parcels in Lecombe County is fifty four thousand, one thirty one. Total assessment is six billion, eight hundred and fifty million, sixty eight thousand, eight sixty four. Any questions?
We have exactly fifty two thousand taxable parcels.
Yeah, that's unusual. That normally doesn't happen. Last year it was fifty one, nine nine four, so the numbers fluctuate each year.
It stays like this forever. Now, we would like to see that number increase.
That's true.
I don't know. Okay, motion to accept.
I will make the motion.
A second. On your side?
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Well, during the Board of Assessments, Revisions at this time, we reconvene commissioners' public meetings for actual items. First.
Yes, so this is a change order to the first contract I referenced that we're finishing up with H and P Construction. This is one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars for some additional handrail work attached on United Methodist Church. That's our polling place for Loyal Stock Township, third precinct, the part of the township that goes over Port Old Lecombe. They were working on the ramp and noticed there were some additional parts of the handrail that really needed to be replaced. So that's what this would be for.
Okay, we should do accept.
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side?
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Two through six, three. Great, James.
Board commissioner, board director. Commissioner, six point two, approve the grant. Actually, it's just a right of way that we're giving PPNL they've signed documents. The cost of the project's already been approved at the board meeting, or the lines get put in a uniform building, so that we're reinstalling the electricity to the unicorn buildings, so move all our structures over from the farm. They needed, PPNL needed this right of way sign before we get started.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side?
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner, six, three, actually, it should have been an informational item. This is, we're going out to bid for Leach Lake Forest Main. We refer to it as when I talk to you about the six and ten. It's a six-inch HD pipe inside of a ten-inch HD pipe. It'll run from our facility down over our property line, down with Camp Lane, and tie into the West Branch Regional Authority around the golf course, their manhole. So we'll be out to bid tomorrow, November eighth, mandatory pre-bid meeting December fourth. Bids are due December twentieth.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Commissioner.
Forrest, Mike?
Good morning. This is vote to approve the new processes and procedures for non-budgeted expenditures. Just, I guess, the bluff on this. Anything non-budgeted, we'll go through a formal process for review and approval at the commissioner level. Basically documented in a form.
Motion to approve the new process procedure.
I will make the motion.
I will second that. On your side? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Frank, Kate?
I'll send the phone number to the caller to call himself.
Okay. He was, he was trying to call in.
Who's that?
Chuck.
Oh, if he was calling right now, I will dial the number.
This time calling Chuck.
Chuck, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay, we have you on the line. Okay. It's up its podium. Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, I can kind of talk, and she can fill in, I guess, if you can hear me. Um, although I have a hip either, but I managed to go all these years without running into COVID, keep my month ran out. So I'm recovering, just kind of quarantining. I don't want to spread this to anyone else, so. But we, as you have seen before, you were asking for the approval to bring Mopac on as a vendor for the morgue equipment, through the cleaners, the body freezers, sink, body carts, bariatric carts, and scaled drying cabinets that we need in the new facility itself. I believe this was reviewed. We got two bids. And Mopac is a close-sized vendor, as Ma has already checked out, the W two D design of Smith, because it's a new twelve bid, and I gave him the nod for Mopac to be the servant provider for the morgue equipment. So we just need, I guess, your approval to move out with that. And we do have next week, there'll be an LS A grant that we're able to secure, so that will help with some of the cost.
I believe that's three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred and forty six dollars, yeah.
Now, three hundred and forty six thousand.
That's a little different.
Is that different? There's a little bit of difference there, Charlie.
So, yeah, yeah. And so, and that actually, in that grant, there's about, it would reduce to six nineteen seventy five down to five fifty four, five seventy seven. Even with that grant, there are also some costs for the autopsy carts, bariatric, drying cabinet.
So you're saying that the six nineteen could be lower?
No, that's going to be the cost. He's just trying to play what the grant funding itself.
Okay. Hey, you have any else you want to add?
I'll just say, in regards to the autopsy carts, only because I've heard it before, there's kind of a misconception that these are just autopsy carts. These will be our everyday, just as we have in the ward now. The difference will be their single trays, so it's not strictly for autopsies. These are going to be our storage trays for everyday use.
Do you want any questions? Okay. Motion to accept the approval of purchase equipment.
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Hope you feel better soon.
Thanks, for sure.
Yeah.
I'm getting there.
Yep, take care. One, six, Leslie.
Seeking your approval. Basically, this is just for a signature. This is a letter of agency to port over some phone numbers at MDJ Dieter. We signed the contract a few months ago, and they just needed an updated letter of agency, just saying that now our numbers are going to be with the current carrier. So basically, it was more just a signature, but I did just want to reiterate that signing this contract was saving us around a hundred and eighty dollars a month, and now the current carrier has upped that, so we're probably going to save a lot more.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
A second. On your side?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Two point seven, John. How are you, John?
Good morning. I'll keep my part of this brief, and I'll invite Jason to come up here to kind of fill in. So this, what you have in front of you is a grant contract with Williamsport Ballport Ballpark, Inc. This is a million-dollar grant agreement utilizing American Rescue Plan dollars to help in part fund the construction of the Lumbry Yard, the Lumbry Yard project. In that project, I'm sure Jason will go over this and a little bit more, but basically, it's a combination of softball and baseball fields, and I believe it will be utilized also for Penn College. There's multiple partners involved, and the commissioners wanted, wanted the planning department to look and see how we could fund, you know, a share of this. This is what we came up with. So, you know, obviously, our money is kind of governed by a few different procurement things, so prevailing wages required, bidding, all that stuff, which we've already kind of gone over and is in agreement as well. But happy to take any questions or invite you up to speak.
Jason?
Thank you, commissioners, and actually, I want to thank John. He's been great to work with on this. We actually were here just a couple of weeks ago with regards to the brownfield funding. This is for ARPA funding to be able to provide to the ball fields. This is actually a match to the city's commitment of a million dollars to the project as well, utilizing, I believe, similar ARPA funds towards this. We are actually, at this point in time, actually mobilizing right now to begin the first phase of the brownfield funding portion of the project. There's equipment that is, I believe, being brought yet today. There will be Uh there will be bigger equipment that will be starting next week. Uh and they will begin, I know the, everybody has noted the concrete that's there. Uh that is gonna be one of the first things that they'll be working on is getting that concrete pile uh broken up. And then uh they'll do site work, the first phase of that project utilizing the brownfield funds is to do just the preliminary site work for the project. That's a little over a million dollars in total. It'll take them about six weeks to be able to get it done.
Okay. Uh Jason, we want to thank you for working with us. We know it's been a long process.
No.
The beginning, it was uh out twenty-two million dollar project.
Yeah.
And uh you may come best, come this back at one time where you're about five million short. We kind of beat you up at the time and said that wasn't possible. There's no way we're gonna be able to do that. And uh we had several meetings after that. Mr. Short, when you were here, when we sat down, we said we'd match what the city did. And the city uh said to do a million dollars, so we figured that we'll use some monies from the ARPA. And uh so we agreed to the million dollars uh to bring on, tell you the agenda today to be voted on. You have anything you want to add?
No. Uh I don't.
We want to thank you for working with us and at the same time, uh it's an exciting project because it's gonna bring estimate of two to three hundred thousand visitors here per year.
Yes.
Uh it'll be an attraction along the highway. At uh the same time, it's gonna, I think, help the overall economy throughout county area.
Yeah, we're, we're anxious to be able to get this uh finished, not just started, but finished uh and more importantly, to be able to see what else uh we projected develop because there are properties uh adjacent to Rose Street uh along the Third Street Corridor and even over on the Fourth Street Corridor uh that uh are able for redevelopment within the city. Um so and we're anxious to be able to see that happen. You know, everybody's aware of what's going on in Maynard Street right now and, you know, we're, that that's exciting, but the fact that uh there's some other areas of the city that uh could benefit from this as well. And realistically, from now to county, um you know, we're, we're gonna bring in a lot of people. Uh they're not only stay in hotels, but they'll also stay in Airbnbs and other places throughout the county. Uh they will do other things beyond just come here to play their tournament games. Uh they'll, they'll do other things in the community and uh you know, hopefully, it's also one of those things where if they come enough, uh they also say, hey, you know what, this isn't a bad place to look at for child opportunities and to be able to relocate. So, you know, we're, we're looking at it on, on all facets.
So seven ballfields total.
Correct.
And one will be Penn College.
There will actually be two Penn College fields there. There will be one that is a s- uh a four hundred foot fence collegiate size field that can be shrunk down uh with portable fencing. That'll be the uh collegiate baseball field. Uh adjacent to that will be uh Penn College's softball field uh as well, so.
Contributed to this also.
And they have also contributed to it. They're also committing a million dollars to the project.
So it's a partnership all the way around.
There are multiple partners that we have at the table, um and and the Visitors Bureau itself, which is obviously the the driver of this. Uh they've committed a million dollars annually towards that service, uh towards the project, be able to get it uh completed.
Alright, any comments? No, I think it's uh, you know, especially as I think that Jason's point, when you drive by, right now, everybody's seeing the cement piles laying there. It's gonna be great to see baseball fields there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're astrophill fields, so they could be played on all kinds of weather.
Uh you can theoretically play from February timeframe through November.
Yeah.
Um and the other aspect of it is, there will be other activities that take place there beyond just baseball, softball. It's turf fields, uh the operators already share with us, there are other things that, you know, take place at these complexes because of the nature of that, there's smaller soccer activities and stuff because of it, so.
Actually, at a previous meeting, the city of Dubois says astrophill, there are fields out there. They have all kinds of attractions, right, right down to the Division Three College World Series. And it's good to bring this up, a lot of attention to their community. And uh you know, Cooperstown has a similar setup, Little League World Series here with the Hall of Fame here, or Little League World Series. And uh so we're doing on a smaller scale, but it'd be uh something to bottle after.
Yeah, we are, we 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 feel pretty confident based off of the uh feasibility study and market study that we did on this. Um it was not without a lot of time and research into it. Um we don't make this type of investment lightly without having the information to be able to justify making that investment. Um and uh we we feel very, very confident based off of it. Obviously, you know, it's, we are known for the home and birthplace of Little League baseball. Um and having Little League World Series here every year is uh, you know, something that people aspire to come and visit. Um you know, this will actually drive people to be here throughout the year now. Um and to be able to come to Williamsport because of the brand that they know of Little League baseball to experience, you know, what else we have in terms of the the sports amenities here in the market. Um and to be able to, you know, again, experience the quality of life that we have.
And we saw Elm Park, when we did a small festival, Elm Park back during COVID. You know, they were able to fix up Elm Park and the number of tournaments that they've brought in and have brought in each year since then is incredible.
And we've actually worked with them as well um on that front. And uh we will actually uh be working with them. We put the operator uh in touch with them uh to be able to look at it because it's, if you look at the proximity of Elm Park um with the, actually, the work the county is doing with the Riverwalk Extension, because that will actually run adjacent to that. People could walk the Riverwalk Extension down to Elm Park to be able to take and play games there as well. So we're actually looking at that because there are three fields there. You can go after larger tournaments. Uh the the group that we're working with is excited about that opportunity as well. So.
Okay. Sounds good. Alright, well, we have it on the agenda finally to vote on. And uh so, yeah, motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Six twenty, committee commissioners, seeking your approval. Resolution twenty twenty twenty-three. Simply just appoints. I attend Director of Financial Management. Environmental Review Officer for the County for CDP. Programs, home program, energy solution grants, and other TCD. Like, under programs.
Okay, motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright.
One nine, Sam.
Morning.
Uh this is just to approve the um lease agreement with Old Lake Homing uh Volunteer Fire Company. We use their fire hall to hold the local technical assistance program in force, in-person courses. Um typically do um eight courses a year, four in the spring, um four in the fall. Um and so this is the agreement for us to be able to use their facility. People seem to like that facility. It's centrally located, great A B setup, so it's working really well for us.
Motion to accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright. Thank you.
Point ten, Shannon.
Morning, commissioners. Um before each day, we have a uh match letter and a resolution to apply for the next round of LSA grants, local share out grants at the state. Um this uh the LSA is uh funding that is brought in through gambling. Um so what we're asking, uh we're working with Delta Development to put in for a million dollar grant for the uh construction of the new Magisterial District Office in Jersey Shore. Um so before you, I have the resolution to do the application and also the match letter, which just shows that we've already uh invested in the purchase of the property and the obtaining an engineer and an architect for the uh designs um in the amount of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. And then commissioners uh would be uh are just stating that they would uh have the additional committed uh additional funding sources to finish the project.
And now just there's a typo in the resolution, my last name's spelled wrong.
Well, I'm s-
So it's gonna have to be changed before we sign it.
I will fix that, sorry.
No problem.
I did not catch that.
Motion to accept resolution.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright.
And just so you know, we are, uh a number of people are, received requests for letters of support for this. Uh we've gotten a letter of support from the Lake Homing Regional Police Force. And um Judge Dieter and some others are going to also be sending letters of support, both from uh we've requested ones from the 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 ports, also requested ones from some of those paladins. And um feel very, very good about this application.
Great, thank you.
Six point eleven, Kenny.
Sorry, Ken.
Morning, before you is an agreement with um or a change order with Dixon A C. And what it is, it's a direct pass through for building permit costs up at um the corner bill.
Uh motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Ah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point twelve through sixteen.
Good morning.
Okay, so six twelve, vote to approve the agreement with Donald Martino Esquire. This is for the Public Defender's Office due to their staffing issues.
Yeah, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright.
Bye.
Six thirteen, votes approved the agreement with William Neely Esquire. This is also for the public defender for the same staffing issues.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright.
Six fourteen, vote to award the bid for testing and inspection of the Lake Homing County Corner Building to Hillis Carnes in the amount of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. That's for the corner building project.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
One second. All fair side.
Alright.
Six fifteen, vote to approve the amendment with Penn Dot to increase the time of the agreement from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight to June thirtieth, twenty thirty-one, and the budget capacity in the amount of one million dollars.
Explain this one a little bit better.
This one is for the Department of Transportation. It's an amendment to an agreement of yes. Turn it on up.
That's a spot. Scott asked me to hang out just in case this came on, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Um so this is the master agreement that the county uh signed with Penn Dot on the original uh date that was gonna end, was gonna be June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Um the Unified Planning Work Program, the U P W P, and the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, they used to be on the same cycle. This past year, we broke that, Penn Dot broke the cycle, so we have a one-year tip. And we're gonna have the current U P W P. Austin and I are working on the next round of U P W P that'll be um voted on here uh in next, next January. This agreement amendment is to increase the date so that we stay within, basically within an agreement with Penn Dot during that, that transitional period here. So it's kicking the terms of the current agreement to twenty uh thirty-one. And based on this, we're also getting another million dollars in in funding for us to be able to do transportation planning. The original agreement on that was currently signed was for um two million, four hundred thousand. This is adding another million to that, so it'll be three million, four hundred thousand dollars. And that is, that is funded, obviously, um through highways and through.
Any questions?
Yep.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright.
Thank you. Thanks, Al.
Okay, and then six point sixteen, vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Geo Rientree Services LLC. That's extending the agreement from eleven, one twenty-four to ten thirty-one, twenty-five.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All fair side.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for pitching. Um. Um I would, I I would add, since I didn't really say much when Forrest was here, that it is amazing to watch. And I can't imagine that another county does it as quickly and efficiently as we do for the voting services, so. Special thanks to all, all that are involved with that, so. Absolutely. Uh this Saturday down at Muncie is the Veterans Parade. It starts at two o'clock. We encourage everyone to attend if you're able to. Uh it's useful community, community each year and I've been involved in several of them, but and it's a special time to honor our veterans. It's a lot of fun and uh it's good to see the youth out celebrating our veterans and honoring them also. And Monday's Veterans Day, just thank a veteran, you see someone that you know is a veteran. Uh just let them know how much they're appreciated because without them, we wouldn't have our freedoms. Are you?
Yeah, I mean, just in all the walks of life of the veterans that we deal with and, you know, the ones that, you know, you know, after their service and they, you know, come back into the, the regular sector of society and, you know, we, we like to thank Matt um and Mike, um our H R director. Um and, you know, lots of people throughout, but, you know, the people that we deal with every day, I think Tom is a veteran as well, who are are personatory. So um, you know, just special thank you to everyone, but, you know, especially wherever you're at, you're the people that you work with on a daily basis. And, you know, above and beyond their service, their former service to our country, you know, we, we appreciate that Matt and Mike and Tom and and uh the people who we work with on a daily basis for what they do for us now and and um you know, just, we enjoy working with them and and thank you for not just what they've done before, but what they, what they continue to do now to, to help, you know, make our community better.
And for those that choose to, there's a lot of veteran organizations out there that would love to have you as all tears to assist in any way that they can uh help to give back to the veterans. Uh there's many of them out there, so please reach out whatever way you can.
Commissioners, I'd say on behalf of all the county employees that are veterans, it's our honor.
Thank you. And we have several throughout the county, so we want to thank each one of them for their service.
I know it's, it's purely coincidental, but the fact that Veterans Day follows up Election Day so closely. It's kind of, a- as we get through the tension of the elections, that then we're kind of so quickly reminded of, of what makes this country great. Um it is a, it is a fortunate coincidence, I think, for America, just to kind of remind us. And uh it's, it's good that it works out though.
Hey, any comments from the audience? Yes, Shannon.
Shannon, have her chance. Uh I just wanted to um let the commissioners know that uh we would like to place an item on next week's agenda. Um we still have a number of people that are trying to work through the flooding situation in Lewis Township and some of the other townships. We met with Lewis Township last night. Um and we let them know that we would, we would request that the commissioners extend the no fee permit for the floodplain uh permits that we need in order to comply with the floodplain ordinance. So technically, that expires today, but next week, we'll ask you to give a forty-five day retroactive extension, if that's okay with you. We'll place it on the agenda actually. So.
Yep, and I was up at uh Jersey, Jersey Shore listening to me, uh Lewis Township, trial run last night for the meeting.
It was a very good meeting.
It was, it was good.
Yeah, I I think, I think everybody understands a little bit better why we need to do what we do. And they also gave us some good feedback on how we can, unfortunately, we know things will happen again with regard to flooding and how we can improve how, how we interact with the public for that.
Absolutely. It's good to always get feedback, you should always make improvements.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So we'll bring that next week to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to apologize that our clock's wrong and we forgot to set it back in next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We will take care of it.
Just noticed that myself, so we'll take it.
You know, in our digital world, the, the clocks you have to take down off the wall and rewind it. Got away from us.
Any comments from online?
Uh.
Take note of them in minutes. Okay. We have to complete our agendas. Our next meeting will be uh Thursday, November fourteenth. And I, thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Is that enough? Is it the solicitor's job?